Article 36. Article 36 is an article to accept a drainage easement off of Adams Street. Article found on page 60 of the warrant report offered by the Public Works Department and Warrant Committee member Rob Skloff. Do you have a motion?
Yes. Move that the town authorize the Board of Selectmen to accept a drainage easement on property located at 83 Adams Street.
And do you have a report?
No.
No report. Are there any questions or comments on the article? On Article number 36. Requires just a simple majority? We'll put it to a vote. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Article 38. Article 38 is an article to authorize the Selectmen to appoint a committee to study senior housing needs in Medfield. The article appears on page 61. Was offered by the Council on Aging. And Warrant Committee Greg Sullivan, do you have a motion?
I do. Article 38. Move that the town authorize the Board of Selectmen to appoint a senior housing study committee to investigate ways to address the need for affordable housing for an aging population. The Warrant Committee recommends passage.
Any questions or comments on Article 38? Microphone number one.
My name is Tony Centori, 27 Long Meadow Road. I've been a resident of Medfield for nearly 50 years. And I, like many other seniors in town, look forward to downsizing and staying in Medfield. In the Warrant Committee report, they mentioned a lot of Medfield seniors unable to find suitable housing in town have moved to Norfolk. And I, for one, don't want to do that. Most of my adult life's been spent in Medfield. I've got a support system of friends and neighbors. And I like Medfield. But there is a need for age-appropriate and reasonably priced senior housing. And I think more and more people in town and in the town government are realizing that this is a problem. The kind of housing that's coming on the market now is not suitable for a lot of seniors in town. And we complain about it, but we don't know what to do about it. So hopefully, this committee is going to focus on what can be done to support seniors. It almost as if you have 40B to help people who are poor, but you ought to have something like 40S to help seniors.
Okay, well, thank you for your comments. Okay, we're going to put Article 38 to a vote. Whoa, whoa.
I'm a senior. Took me a couple of seconds to get up here. I agree totally with Tony, everything he said. My question, though, is, there's no money appropriated to this committee? Okay, so it's all volunteer committee. Where do we sign up?
There we go. Right after the meeting with the Board of Selectmen. Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. Next article is Article 21. Article 21 is an article to upgrade high school's multipurpose field. The original article can be found on page 51 of the Warrant Committee report. The article was proposed by the school committee. It does require a two-thirds majority vote because of satisfaction with bonding requirements. And Warrant Committee Chairwoman Martha Fester, do you have a motion?
I do. Move that the town appropriate $1,700,000 to meet said appropriation. $150,000 to be transferred for free cash. $50,000 to be transferred from the General Fund Stabilization Fund. And the treasure collector with the approval of the Board of Selectmen be authorized to borrow $1,500,000 under the provision of GL Chapter 44, Section 7, Paragraph 25, or any other enabling statute for the purpose of reconstructing the multipurpose field and track and associated facilities at the Amos Clark Kingsbury High School located at 88R South Street, Medfield, including the payment of costs incidental or related thereto, and authorize the school committee to enter into contracts with private parties, the federal government, and/or the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to accomplish said purpose.
And do you have a report?
Yes, I do. The multipurpose field at the high school was originally installed in 2004 entirely with donated funds as a result of an amazing effort led by Tim Nugent and his team of dedicated volunteers. Moving from grass to a synthetic field significantly increased the usage of the field, reduced the maintenance cost, and added sources, a source of rental revenue. The generosity of private donors has helped Medfield manage many town needs with minimal tax impact. And this will be continuing with fundraising to support needed improvements to things such as the lights, the scoreboard, fencing, and concessions at the field. However, the 12-year-old multipurpose field has been used long past its 10-year expected life, and the surface is truly unsafe. We need a safe and durable field, or it's becoming unsafe. We need a safe and durable field for the many users, including 18 high school teams, youth lacrosse, youth soccer, adult leagues, marching band, middle and high school physical education classes, and other community members. It is a widely-used resource in town. And it needs replacement now. This proposal is for $1.7 million renovation to the field, which will be funded by bonding. Revenue from field rental will partially offset the cost to the town, and the expected tax impact to the average household is conservatively estimated at $35 per year. Could be less than that. The Warrant Committee unanimously recommends passage.
Okay, I think we have a presentation from the school department. Superintendent Marzen?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I appreciate the opportunity to speak in front of a town meeting tonight. Also, I always appreciate the opportunity to represent the 2,600 Medfield residents that aren't old enough to vote this evening. On the opening slide, you'll see that our field is used for lacrosse, field hockey, and in the middle, you'll see the schematics for the new turf field. Our turf field was installed in 2004, as Martha said. We were one of the first school districts in the area to have a synthetic turf field at that time. Thousands upon thousands of kids have enjoyed this field, and without the hard work of Tim Nugent and many others, it wouldn't have happened. So we really appreciate all the work that Tim did in his group. This field over the last 12 years has seen 10 state championships, which is almost unheard of for a school of 900 students. Also, you know, 18 school teams, youth sports, adult league, marching band, and middle and high school fields. So there's no way a natural field could ever support the use that our athletic fields So just the current turf condition. Over the last three years, we've made significant repairs and maintenance that have totaled $45,000. So if you go through the fields and you look at it from afar, you might say, well, it's green, and there's stripes on it, it's not in bad shape. But if you were to walk on the field, there are many depressions. There's certainly deteriorated fibers on the field. If you look at the picture that I put up there, that was after a rainstorm last October. So you'll see that the bunch at the end, that is, that of fibers that have been removed from the field that have deteriorated. The water came down because the drainage system is failing, and it all ended up in one end of the field. Our consultants that we're using for this, they said they've never even seen a field do that before. So the field has served us well. It's been an outstanding investment for the kids of Medfield, but it's certainly time. The drainage system is failing, and we noticed that because as you walk on the field and the base, there'll be depressions throughout the field. So the last couple of years, we've had a company come in, cut the turf, put some more base layer in there to try to smooth out the field, but it's just a never-ending cycle because of the failure of the system. Just some other pictures for you to look at. On the far left, if you pay close attention to the thick fibers, that's what the field looked like when it was first opened. So that's what the fibers should look like on the turf field. You'll see that there's just mostly crumb, black crumb rubber, and just a matting of all different old fibers. So the field itself isn't even there. When we paint the M each fall before football season, it stays probably about one or two weeks because it's just attaching to the rubber fibers. There's no turf to attach to anymore. The middle shows one of the recent repairs that we did over the summer. Right in front of the cross nets, the goalie nets, it was completely worn down. There was no turf left there at all. So you'll see the difference. In the foreground, you see the existing turf, and then in the background, you see that's a repaired area. So that's what it should look like. But because it's so worn down, that we had to replace that whole section. And on the far right, you'll see that there's a huge section, I'm not sure that will go up there, but a huge section of turf that had to be replaced. And we have three sections of that on the field. Again, that was completely worn turf that was not safe, and we need to replace that just to make it usable for the last couple of seasons. So the proposed replacement turf, it's really the next generation of athletic fields. Clearly, the technology has improved in the last 10 years with the development of turf. The fibers are much more durable. One of the things that we're excited about in this project should have passed this evening is a shock pad. And you'll see that's the white layer. That's a cross-section of the field. The shock pad is there to reduce concussions. So traditional fields would have rock and sand, and then the turf on top of that. This provides a nice padded layer to prevent concussions, but still maintains the playability of the field. In this project is acrylic coated sand, so it's not black crumb rubber. It's acrylic coated sand, which has a lot of benefits, which I'll talk about in the next slide. And then there's a drain system that will easily remove the water off the field, which is something we've had difficulty with in the last few years. So there'll be a perimeter drain, a drenched drain, and then slot drains throughout the entire field. Just to give you a sense of the code and what it looks like in terms of piping on the drain systems now, 10 years ago, the drainage systems had 8-inch pipes. We're looking at doing 18-inch pipes in the diameter. So it certainly can move a lot of water and would prevent any flooding as we have today. So the next-generation field has many, many benefits. Certainly the reduced risk of concussions. There's something called GMAX testing that is done on fields, and that GMAX testing shows the resistance, or shows how hard the field is, and which in turn is an issue around concussions with students' heads hitting the field. Natural grass has a GMAX of 80 to 140. Our field right now, I'm not sure, but it's certainly above 140. We haven't had it tested. With the shock pad, the new field would maintain a GMAX of 120, which is very similar to natural grass, for 16 years guaranteed. So certainly, the technology has come a long way since we put in the field 12 years ago. One thing, if you've ever been on a turf field on a warm day, you know that it's probably about 20 to 30 degrees warmer on a turf field, which certainly are concerns with kids. If you've been at graduation or high school graduation on the field, it's pretty warm. With this new infill, the acrylic coated sand, it's 25% cooler, so that we see that as a huge benefit to our kids and our students. The field, the shock pad in the infill lasts longer, so the shock pad has 16-year guarantee, and the infill has a 16-year guarantee. So we can always vacuum that all up and put it back down again, whereas with the black crumb rubber, we're putting it down every single year. The compaction issue again is tied to the GMAX and the concussions in the infill movement. If you've ever been on our field or any other traditional turf field, you see the black rubber fly up all the time, or you might have it in your car or in your house and the laundry, as some people have told me. There's 85% less of that. The infill stays intact in the grass, in the turf, and doesn't fly around. So that's really important. Certainly, we're not replacing the infill constantly like we are with the black crumb rubber. And then this acrylic coated sand is coated with a microband so that it resists bacteria, mildew, and mold, which is important, and it's certainly cleaner than what we have now. So going forward, as Martha mentioned, we talked about fundraising. We were fortunate enough last year to get $50,000 at town meeting to do a field study town-wide to get a sense of what we needed for a field. You know, anecdotally, we knew we needed a new field, but we needed professionals to come in and give us a really good sense of what was needed and when it was needed. So the field study recommended that we need new lighting. The current lighting on those poles certainly are from the '90s, and they're not very energy-efficient. And I'm told that the telephone poles were hand-dug in the early to mid-'90s. Certainly need to be replaced at some point soon. The scoreboard is something that they recommended to be replaced. Fortunately, we met with the CEO, Mark Whalen, of Needham Bank a couple of weeks ago. He confirmed in a letter to me today that they are donating $30,000 for a new scoreboard. So we want to thank Needham Bank for that. Also, a recommendation that came out of the field study was a new perimeter fence, which we do not have in our budget for this new project. A snack shack to be brought up to modern codes. Certainly, that has served well, but it needs to be brought up to code. And then storage. Storage is always an issue with supplies that we have around the field, so we need to look at fundraising for that. A couple of other pieces here. So as a school district, as Martha had mentioned earlier, that we raise revenue from facility use. So what we have pledged in this project is $300,000 over the 10-year bond, so essentially, we will pay $30,000 a year of that payment to the town as a thank you, and certainly trying to do what we can to support this. Our DPW has been great. They are going to do, help us out with the site work and landfill. So as soon as the contractor pulls up the turf and everything underneath there, they will help us by trucking that off-site for us, which will be a substantial savings as well. And then just to give you a sense on the project duration, you know, it's really a six-week project if the weather cooperates. But realistically, we'd like to start the day after graduation in June, and should be finished by the end of August and ready for our fall sports and marching band season. So that's what we're looking forward to, and I'll be happy to answer any questions. Mr. Moderator, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for the superintendent? Microphone number one.
Hi, Lisa Thompson, 4 Sturbridge Road. Completely in favor of this. Correct me if I'm wrong about this statement, but the field that we're looking to replace this with is one that is not like what some other towns are doing with those synthetic fields that have known carcinogens in them and have been loosely linked by some studies to various forms of cancer in athletes who play on them. I think this is a completely safe field, from what I understand?
So if you're talking about crumb rubber, it's not a crumb rubber field. It's an acrylic sand field, so it takes the crumb rubber piece out of the equation. So I know, and crumb rubber is still used in lots of places. I know Westwood is going out to do theirs next year, and that's going to be crumb rubber as well. As I said to a parent that talked to me about it, you know, we might have an acrylic coated field in Medfield, but just remember, the rest of the league has crumb rubber. So this is the next generation of fields. You know, I always try to think of that we were the first around to have a field, so let's be on the cutting edge again and get this kind of field that will really serve our kids well for many, many years.
Okay. I think that's another important safety benefit I'd put on your list.
Thank you. Microphone number one.
Jerry Kazandt, 77 Grand Street. It's nice to be on the cutting edge and be first, but 12 years ago, we were first with that field, and it lasted 16 years, I think you said?
No, 12 years.
12 years.
Yes.
This is a new product also, right?
It's been around, I think, four to six years. There's two fields in Massachusetts right now that have it, Wellesley College and Newburyport High School. And there are five other fields going in the North Shore with this. We went and visited Newburyport. They've had it for over a year. They're very, very happy with it.
What kind of guarantees do we have with this product?
Guarantees for what?
Well, how long? You said it was going to last 20 years?
No, no. So the shock pad, the white shock pad, which I can go back to, is guaranteed for 16 years. And the infill, the green infill acrylic coated sand is also 16-year guarantee. The turf itself would be guaranteed 16 years.
Okay. So you'll be back in 16 years for another field?
Maybe before that.
Hi, Joanne Leno's, 9 Hearthstone. So my children were in the schools here when that field went in in 2004, and my question is, who is going to oversee the quality control? Because there were some problems when that field went in. And I'd just like to know who's going to be minding the store during the product selection and the construction?
Okay. I really can't speak to the 2004 because I wasn't there, but I know we have a project manager in place right now that we've worked with since last year that did the field study and has been working with us this whole process. So they've worked with us in the bid specs, everything. So they'll be a part of that process as well.
But who's the point person? Is there a point person that is going to oversee all the quality? Is that this project manager?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, Matthew Johnson, 3 Hospital Road.
Hey, Matt.
Hello. How are you doing, Mr. Dark Marzen?
I'm doing great, thanks.
It's good to hear. So I'm an athlete, and I've been using this field since I was very little for soccer and lacrosse. I've broken bones on it, and just at practice not an hour ago, I twisted my ankle on it trying to make a move. So it's not safe in any ways, or in any sense of the word. There's many dead spots, and most of my team slips and slides around on it a lot. And also, as a soccer goalie, I know I swallowed way too many of those black little pellets diving into the turf. So the sand would be a big improvement from that. And so I highly urge all of you to approve and say yes to this article.
Good. Thank you. Okay, last comment. Microphone number one.
Hi, I'm Neil Mara at 14 Loffler Lane. I'd like to know if there's any way to accomplish this without reducing the head count to the two employees that have to be let go in the custodial and fourth grade levels?
Okay, good question. So that's, I mean, certainly two different budgets and different scenarios. The two head counts that are, one was someone that has left the district, and we're not rehiring that position. And the other is based on enrollment. So our enrollment is going down. We have a group of, a smaller group of kids coming through, and we're dropping a teacher each time. That person is actually certified in another area and is going into that area, so we're not losing a person there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, there being no other comments or questions, we're going to put this to a vote. This is Article 21, the motion on Article 21. This does require a two-thirds vote because of bonding requirements. And so all in favor of the motion to upgrade the high school multipurpose field, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. I'm going to deem that it passes by two-thirds. So those of you that are going, if it was that much fun to spend $1.7 million, we're going to spend another, what, $58 million in the next few minutes, so please hang around. Okay, next article. Article 31. Article 31 is linked with Articles Number 30 and Number 32. So we'll do Article Number 31 first, and then we will do 30 and 32. These are articles that have to do with Medfield on the Charles, the former state hospital site, so we link them together. And Article 31 is a motion to appropriate funds for the former state hospital consultants. The article is found on page 57. It was offered by the Board of Selectmen and Warrant Committee Chairwoman Martha Fester has a motion.
Article 31. Move that the town appropriate $50,000, said sum to be raised on FY '17 tax levy for the purpose of hiring consultants, engineers, and/or attorneys to assist the town with ongoing preparation of a master plan for reuse of the former hospital and surrounding areas, and to advise the town on matters concerning the site's disposition, reuse, and environmental remediation. Said funds to be expended under the direction of the Board of Selectmen, with the understanding that the Board of Selectmen may authorize any other town board, commission, committee, or department to expend a portion of said fund for such purpose.
Okay, do you have a report?
Do not have a report. The Warrant Committee recommends passage.
Are there any questions on Article 31? Mr. Harney?
The matter of the state hospital is so complex and has been under such discussion for the past two years that we really need to look at the status that currently maintains. And in that need of a context for a $50,000 addition to what is already probably well in excess of $200,000, queries, where are we with it? What have we bought for the significant money we've expended? And how much of the previously voted money still maintains? I believe it's over $100,000. So why are we adding $50,000 at this point? And what are we going to get for it? If you followed the hospital deliberations closely, you know that they hired a consultant. The consultant has now, I understand, billed the town for, attempting to build a town for additional money that goes beyond the original contract. It's no secret that the hospital committee has had its moments of displeasure and probably mutually back from the consultant, so that they hired another consultant to look at the reasons that things weren't moving well and amicably between the parties. So, you know, I really have a further problem with the whole situation that we're in here in bringing consultants in to do one thing, and that is to develop the hospital. We've had a roundtable of consultants come in, and the key concept that they had was density. Density of housing development. Okay? Now, we probably would all agree that there will be housing development.
Let me interrupt you for one second if I could. So we're about three minutes into this. I don't know whether you're in favor of the motion yet or opposed to the motion.
Well, it's difficult for me, who I go to all the meetings, as you know, Scott.
I do.
And the, you know, I sit there as a sole voice of concern about the consequential damages that will come to the town of Medfield from heavy development at that hospital site. I see the wonder of the land up there, the beauty of the place, what it can be. And all I hear is a plan to develop it. I know we need to meet 40B. I fully understand that.
Okay, John, I'm going to cut you off, in fact, because I'm going to actually make a recommendation. It's very, very important for everybody in town to engage, as Mr. Harney has done for a long time, in these issues. I spent two hours and 17 minutes yesterday looking at the YouTube. That is a great way for people to get up to speed with the meeting that the hospital committee had on April 11th. It was highly informative across a whole range of issues. People got a chance to speak. We've got a lot of opportunity to, but, so tonight is not the night we're going to debate the big questions for the state hospital. We've got three small articles. This one being to engage consultants for $50,000. So are you in favor of this article or opposed?
I would not, I will not vote for it because I think there's more than adequate money already available to the committee. I think that you can, I'll use the $50,000 to defray some other compelling present needs. We're not going to see, I understand that the chairman wants to have a meeting, a special town meeting, in the fall. I personally don't think that will happen, but it may, and we can surely fight this out then. But what I would ask, what I would ask is that if they hire another consultant to add to the first two, that we look at open space recreation, we look at the consequential damages and the taxes and the educational program, we look at the community and what the community wants. So what, we're begging the question that the town answered overwhelmingly when they sent out their surveys, Scott, that they want open space, environmental protection, recreation.
Yeah, but John, you'll find another forum to have this conversation, this dialogue because...
Unhappily, there are no other forums. You don't come to the hospital meeting, so you don't perhaps understand...
I don't come to every hospital meeting.
You'd have to come to every hospital meeting.
Randy sends a report every week. I get it. I read that. I look online. So all I'm saying is that tonight, we're voting on this particular provision, and I do respect that there's a point of view that says, okay, the hospital should remain as open space going into the future. There's also another point of view that says we voted, and there was some consideration to the fact that the amount of the expenditures we're spending every year were going to be repaid to us through development. There's all kinds of perspectives on this particular question, but we're not going to shake them out all right here over this article.
You and others keep saying that this is a hugely important consideration for the town, and yet we finesse it all the time.
I haven't finessed anything.
You are. You're quieting me for the second year in a row. All right? Now, I have put in the...
John, you went for three minutes, and we didn't know whether you were opposed or in favor of the motion. So answer first. Now you're opposed to the motion? Is there anybody who wants to speak in favor of the motion?
Mr. Moderator, Ken Richard, 51 Countryway in Medfield. I spent the last two years or so working on various committees in relation to the acquisition and future development of the site. And I would say the following, in speaking strictly to the motion, because that's what we're here to talk about. My concern frankly is that, where are we going? I mean, we've been playing with this for a long time. The committee, I love them... The committee, I love them all, they're putting in tremendous amount of time, I respect their effort tremendously, but it's a rudderless ship and it's, you just, it hasn't put one stake in the ground anywhere in terms of where we're heading, what the particular programming might be, and all I would ask is, before the town dies the death of a thousand slashers, that we stop appropriating small money to get it through for us and have one comprehensive outlook in the critical path as to where we're heading. Thank you.
Wait, can I just take that? So you're agreeing with Mr. Harney and you're opposed to the motion for the...
No, actually, you know what, no, I'm very glad to give them $50,000 this year, but I want it to be directed and I want to see an outcome. Thank you.
Okay, microphone number one.
Girodero in Five Woodfall. I know we're considering 31 and 32 together, and I'm looking at 31 and it's saying we're gonna spend this money to come up with a master plan for reuse of the former hospital. 32 seems to be doing the same thing, only it's a market analysis, including culture, to develop a business plan. What's the difference between the two and why are they two separate articles?
Okay, we'll speak to Article 32. Do you want to, anybody wanna just summarize? It's a totally different...
Article 32 is a, looking to, for $17,000 to do two studies. It's matching money for a state grant that we think that we're gonna get, so we're gonna, we're looking to get $17,000 for the purpose of doing a market analysis of the cultural potential up there and reuse of three buildings, a financial analysis of whether or not this is the sort of thing that makes sense. Hopkinton did one of these studies and they parlayed their study into then a $450,000 grant from the state that they used to build a, some sort of cultural center in Hopkinton. The question, I guess, really is whether or not having a cultural component to a development can make money for the development and for the town. And so that's, I think, really what the study is aimed at.
I don't disagree with what you're saying, I'm just wondering, a master plan and now we have a cultural sub-plan and we're gonna have an athletic sub-plan and how many different plans are we gonna have?
Well, this one is separate because it's the matching grant from the state, and so that this one needs to be set apart for that purpose of the matching grant.
Mr. Potts?
Jerry Potts, 7 Kerr Street. So I want to say, Mr. Harney, you're not a lone voice. There are many people who respect the work that you've done and, very much. I've had the opportunity to attend a lot of the state hospital meetings and there is an incredible amount of work that's gone on. My big disappointment with it is VHB, the consultant there, we're sitting here appropriating more money and they haven't delivered what they were supposed to in the fall, which was financial models that would allow us to start making decisions, and we're appropriating more money to get the model we thought we were gonna get in the fall. So they came back with three high-density, you know, overdeveloped proposals with one model, and I didn't think that's what the town had asked for. So I'm discouraged that we're not holding them accountable, and as a consultant, it's been underwhelming to see the work they've done. They weren't even invited to speak at the recent meeting on the state hospital. So I don't think they're doing a good job, I think that should concern the town. Secondly, I see Gene here, and I'll kill two birds on the 32. So, Mr. McDermott started this by saying, clear thinking and good planning. This might be the best $17,000 we spend. The town overwhelmingly voted for open space, culture. This grant, I'm on the Board of Club Passime in Cambridge, we applied for that, it's a nonprofit organization in Cambridge, it's been around forever. We used not only the grant for the finances, the matching, but incredible resources the Mass Cultural Council brought us to get some great insights, to make some really smart decisions. So I strongly support that effort. I'm less giddy about the VHB proposal at this point in time because I just don't think they're delivering what the town needs.
Thank you. Microphone number one.
Steve Nolan, Chair of the Master Planning Committee. I guess a couple things. One, I appreciate Mr. Harney's views about open space up there. We've spent a lot of time surveying the community and got a lot of results suggesting that people had a big mix of different things they wanted to do there. There is a lot of interest in open space, there's a lot of interest in recreational activities, there's a lot of interest in senior housing. So there are different things that people want to have up at the site, and we really haven't had a rush to develop, as Mr. Harney repeatedly says. We're trying to look at a balanced approach, and as a result, it's been a little difficult because there's a lot to try to figure out up there. It would have been easy to do a cookie cutter development and just say, let's just sell the whole thing and create a huge housing development. That would have been pretty simple, but it's been a little more complicated than that, in part because of a lot of the feedback that we got from the community. As far as VHB goes, we haven't been entirely happy with them, but we're still working with them. This money isn't really to pay for the additional work on the financial model. When we got the VHB money approved at last town meeting, we intentionally pulled back on some of the scope in order to keep costs down, because we knew that we were likely to be in a process that would take longer than one fiscal year, so we held back and didn't fund phases two and three of their work, which would be to develop an actual zoning plan and a potential disposition plan. So a lot of the monies that we're approving now are for those subsequent phases of their work. So, you know, I appreciate a lot of people's frustrations, there's a lot of interest in trying to do good things up there and interesting things, and we're doing our best and we encourage people to participate. We always welcome people at our meetings and we love to have the input, so we hope that everybody will stay engaged with us and we hope you'll approve this article. Thanks.
Thank you. Microphone number two.
Hi, I'm Keith Kerbo, 12 Pilgrim Lane, and before I make a comment on 32, I just wanna be very clear...
We're on Article Number 31. We'll get to Article Number 32, we're gonna do them in sequence.
The money for 32, we have to approve 31 in order for that money for 32?
No.
All right, 'cause that wasn't super clear, so thank you, I'll come back.
Okay, okay. And Gina, if you're gonna speak to 32...
You want me to come back?
Yeah, if you just could wait a second, we're gonna vote on Article 31. 31 is the article, excuse me, providing for an expenditure and appropriation of $50,000 to be, for consultants. Anybody else wanna speak in opposition? John, do you have anything else to add? In opposition to this article?
The concern, once again, is that no focus is being brought to the, what the town really desires is to have a wonderful spot up there, I think, with open space, parking rec utilization, and also to leave something for the future. You know, we had, from VHB, the consultant, the first proposal which they recommended for the town, had well over 600 units of housing going on the property. Now, the committee did gasp at that, but the committee still is focused entirely because they said this electman's charge to them...
This was to whether we're gonna spend $50,000...
I understand.
So are you...
There's a lot of reasons not to, and that is because the initial money, as was said by Mr. Potts, has not resulted in a deliverable.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
So, a good reason is not to keep feeding the fire.
Okay, we're gonna put this to a vote, okay? You have new information? Like to speak in opposition? Okay, last speaker.
Chuck Farula, 91 Pleasant Street. I was at the most recent meeting of the Master Plan Committee, at which the second consultant gave their report, and it was clear from the report that the committee is suffering from a clear lack, a lack of clear direction as to how to proceed. It's clear that there's dissension within the committee or has been in the past, there are subgroups that have gone off on their own, there is no hierarchy of the decision-making, and the committee itself, I don't think, will dispute that consultant's findings. So I am hesitant and will not support this article, because it seems as though we're putting the cart before the horse. We're appropriating money for a committee that really doesn't know quite what its direction is or should be at this time. Thank you.
Okay, well, I'll let the committee defend itself, but they evidenced to me a lot of knowing what they're doing and trying to put focus against this in the two hours and 17 minutes of the YouTube video on the April 11th meeting. So I thought there was, there was some fairly clear statements, it's just that people don't agree. So it's, last comments, Lucille, then we'll go here first.
Okay, my name, Lucille Fisher, 3 Kenny Road. I'm on the communications resource for the Medfield State Hospital Master Planning Committee. I've been to every single one of the meetings for at least the last year, maybe more. This is a big project. It's not simple. The committee is working really hard to figure out the very best solution for the town of Medfield. What Steve said, what Steve said, I just wanna say, in terms of the $50 we're asking for, it's not really something new. We held back last year and...
Are you in favor of the...
I am absolutely in favor.
Okay, microphone number two.
My question to the committee is, what is the dire consequence if this is voted down?
Dire consequences? Okay, the dire consequences of voted down, anybody in the committee wanna address dire consequences?
Steve Nolan again. I don't, there's no dire consequence, it'll be one more year of holding onto the property and not deciding. I'm not sure how many of the committee members are gonna be able to stomach another year of going through this. I mean, the idea is we're trying to conclude our plan and move things forward. If we don't get the funds, there's only so much we can do, we're putting in a ton of time already and we just aren't planners ourselves, so we're not gonna be able to do these plans ourselves. So it'll largely cause our efforts to grind to a halt eventually, and so it's delay, so...
Okay, that's it, sorry Gus. Okay, we're gonna put this, Article Number 31, to a vote. All in favor of the expenditure for $50,000 for the consultants, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
I'm gonna deem that the motion carries. We move to Article 30. Article 30 is an article to appropriate funds for the maintenance of the former state hospital property. Can be found on page 57 of the warrant report. And Warrant Committee Member Jack Wolfe, do you have a motion?
Move that the town appropriate $150,000, said sum to be raised on the FY17 tax levy for the purpose of providing ongoing maintenance and security at the site of the former state hospital. The warrant committee recommends passage.
You have a report, please?
No report.
No report. Okay, now, comments on this expenditure? This is $150,000 in maintenance. Microphone number one.
Hi, John Thompson, 406 Main Street. I'm the keeper of the asylum. And, you know, it's 700,000 square feet of buildings and it's 90 acres of a core campus, 36 acres, on the other side of Hospital Road. It's been a lot of work, some of the expenditures are one-time costs, these costs are mainly for security, mowing the grass, and help from Public Works and the Police Department to keep the place safe and open for recreational use. And it's gone very well in the last year and I look forward to another year of helping out. Thanks.
Contrary to my past, my earlier statements, no one in town deserves more credit than John Thompson for responding to the needs. He is an extraordinary individual, a wonderful scientist, and a better citizen we just don't have. So I urge you to vote positively for this. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Requires a simple majority vote?
The, Jerry Kazandon, Grand Street. The car show that's coming up there in June, I assume we're charging them for use of the fields?
$2,000.
$2,000, okay.
Okay, thank you. Article 30, all in favor of the motion to appropriate $150,000 in funds for maintenance of former state hospital property, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, I'm gonna deem that carries. Article Number 32. Article Number 32 is the article to appropriate matching funds for a state grant to study potential cultural uses at the hospital site. And Barbara Gips, do you have a motion for me?
I do. Move that the town appropriate $17,450, said sum to be raised on the fiscal year 17 tax levy, subject to the receipt of matching funds from a grant from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the purpose of which is to conduct a market analysis and feasibility study of incorporating cultural uses into the redevelopment of the former state hospital site and create a business plan.
And do you have a report?
I do have a report. This article is to appropriate less than $17,500 from the tax levy, which may be matched from a grant by the Massachusetts Cultural Facilities Fund for a study of cultural uses of a portion of the Medfield State Hospital property. The town was originally told it would be notified of the grant by town meeting. It has not, this decision has been delayed until May, although it is highly likely that the town will receive the money. If the grant does not come through, there will be no cost to the town. Based on results of the town-wide survey, there are strong uses and cultural interest at the state hospital. 75% of town residents are in strong agreement that Medfield would benefit from expanded cultural programs there. The warrant committee recommends passage of this article.
Okay, Gene? Microphone number one.
Thank you, Gene Minio, Alder Road. I'm Chair of the Cultural Alliance of Medfield and I'm also on the Resource Committee for the Master Planning at the state hospital, and I participate in all those meetings. I just wanted to explain that this was created as a separate article as a request by town leaders as a standard procedure because they felt it was important that residents know and understand that this is a match and a highly competitive grant situation and a one-to-one match is required. The grant was, in fact, submitted by the town through the planning department. I wanted to add that the grant was discussed and supported by the Master Planning Committee with a goal to integrate the results within their planning process and the site evaluation, and emphasize that the timing is critical because this grant opportunity only comes around once a year. And by this time next year, we anticipate the master planning will be completed. It's important to note that the expertise to conduct this evaluation does not exist within the current consultants to the level of detail required, and the next step in the master planning process is developing the financial models. Finally, the goal of the grant is twofold, one is this market analysis, to identify the cultural gaps and opportunities in the region and the appropriate scale, and then, second, to evaluate if any of the buildings are compatible with these uses and the costs for renovation, ultimately forming the business plan. If the renovation is not financially feasible, when you also consider tax credits and grants and some of the other revenue sources, and that's also valuable information as well. I'm not aware of any other studies that are analyzing costs to renovate for a specific purpose or program yet, but the town is required to explore the feasibility of reuse before wholesale demolition, and we think that this is an important step of serving the needs of Medfield and beyond and to determine the realistic financials for a piece of this state hospital puzzle. Thank you.
Thank you. Microphone number two.
Keith Kerbo, just background, I'm one of the music teachers at Dale Street School and grew up in Medfield. So you get a picture of the Mass Cultural Council's budget for the next fiscal year, FY17, is going from 14 million down to 10 million. So that's $10 million for arts purposes for the six and a half million people of Massachusetts and us, the chance of this coming around again for $17,000 for us to get it will not be there again next year if we don't do it now. And also, of course, with the proceedings of the committee, that this has to be done now, and as a lifelong resident of Medfield and then also one of the arts teachers in school and an arts advocate in town, there's a, there really is a pressing need to figure out a way to make our community more vibrant with the arts and give things for people to do in ways that people engage and raise the profile of Medfield across Metro West and through Boston. So I would strongly encourage us to vote yes for this and get something going and moving quickly.
I had a two-minute speech ready, I'm gonna do it in 30 seconds. The amount of money that we're being asked to appropriate here would amount to, if my calculations are right, and I think they are, $1 on your quarterly tax bill for one year to assure that we don't have a ready-fire-aim problem with this, instead of ready, aim, fire. We need, let's get this information so that we can plan it intelligently.
Okay, thank you. Okay, no further comments on Article 32 and requiring just a simple majority, we're gonna put it to a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Next article is Article 20. Article 20 will be taken first... Article 20 will be taken first and then we will do Article 19. These have to do with two different kinds of plans that are both found their way into the warrant. And the first one, Article 20, that was drawn is an article to appropriate funds for a townwide master plan. It can be found on page 51 of the warrant report. And then, after this, we will take up Article 19, which appropriates funds for a capital plan. So, the Board of Selectmen proposed both of these articles. And Jack Wolfe, do you have a motion on Article 20?
We do. Move that the town appropriate $10,000. Said sum to be raised on the fiscal year '17 tax levy for the purpose of preparing a town master plan as provided in General Laws, Chapter 41, Paragraph 81D.
And do you have a report?
We do. The warrant committee is in agreement with the concept and direction of this article, preparation of a town master plan, but not its timing. Given the extensive work that is being done by the Medfield State Hospital Master Planning Committee, the warrant committee recommends that the majority of the work of this new town master plan committee, yet to be formed, be done after the completion of the deliberations of the Medfield State Hospital Master Planning Committee. Those deliberations expected to be complete before the end of fiscal year, of calendar year 2016, before the end of calendar year 2016. The warrant committee recommends the, a sum of $10,000, not $100,000, be provided for formation of a committee, the establishment of appropriate master planning goals, work by that committee to fully understand the efforts and recommendations of the Medfield State Hospital Master Planning Committee and other associated initial activities. Please note that this effort is completely separate from the capital plan in Article 19 to be discussed next. The warrant committee recommends passage in the amount of $10,000.
Questions? Comments on Article 20? Okay, again, requires just a simple majority. We will put it to a vote. This is the $10,000 appropriation for, of funds for a townwide master plan. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed? The article carries. Article 19 is an article to appropriate funds for a capital plan, found on page 50 of the warrant report. Warrant committee member Barbara Gips, do you have a motion?
I do. Move that the town appropriate $50,000 to be raised on the fiscal year '17 tax levy for the purpose of preparing a capital plan for the town. Said funds to be used in conjunction with $30,000 received from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts under the provisions of the Commonwealth Compact Program and that the selectmen be authorized to enter under contracts and accept funds from federal, state, and private parties to accomplish said purpose. And yes, yes, I have a report. Article 19 would appropriate $50,000 from the tax levy to combine with a $30,000 state grant to fund a 20-year capital study. After analysis of the current state of our buildings and other town-owned capitals such as equipment and vehicles, a plan will be developed for capital improvements over the next 20 years. The capital plan, once approved by town meeting, would be continually updated to reflect progress and changes to the plan. The plan will integrate with existing facility management software and become a live document utilized by the Capital Budget Committee to prioritize and schedule future capital investments in a fiscally responsible way. Although the article is printed in the warrant, indicated that the amount requested is $50,000 and the warrant committee recommended $10,000, the latter is a typo. The warrant committee supports the $50,000 figure. And the warrant committee recommends passage of this article.
Okay, questions? Comments on Article 19? Article 19 also just requires a simple majority for passage. If there are no questions or comments, we'll put it to a vote. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed? And the motion carries. Thank you. Next article is Article 16. Article 16 has our operating budget. We're going to follow the same procedure that we followed in the past. I'm going to read the general department organization codes. If you want to put a hold on any of these budget items, please just yell out hold as we go through them. We'll then vote on all the provisions, the expenditures that were not held, then we will consider the held items, and then we will vote on the held items, and then we will vote on the final budget finally. So, beginning with workers' compensation insurance, health and life insurance, liability insurance, unemployment compensation, Medicare insurance, county retirement contribution, selectmen salaries, selectmen operations, town administrator salaries, town administrator operations, warrant committee operations, town accountant salaries, town accountant operations, assessors' salaries, assessors' operations, treasurer collector salaries, treasurer collector operations, town council operations, human resource salaries, human resource operations, information technology salaries, information technology operations, town clerk and election register salaries, town clerk and election register operations, conservation commission salaries, conservation commission operations, planning salaries, planning operations, zoning and appeals operations, town hall public building and property maintenance salaries. We have a hold on 01192 on page 37 under Town Hall Public Building and Property Maintenance Salaries. 01192 is Town Hall Public Building and Property Maintenance Operations. Town Report Meetings and Salaries, Town Report Meeting Operations. On the other one, on 0192-2 as well? Dash two. Just the operations. Okay, so only the second, on page 37, line item 01192-2, that's the one that is being held. We'll come back to that. Town Report Meeting Salaries, Town Report Meeting Operations, Police Administration Operations, Police Operations Salary, Police Operations Operations, Traffic Markings, Signs and Operations, School Traffic Salaries, School Traffic Operations, Fire and Rescue and Administration Salaries, Fire and Rescue Administration Operations, Fire Rescue Operations Salary, Fire and Rescue Operations Operations, Inspection Salary, Inspection Operations, Sealer Salary, Sealer Operations, Mema Operations, Animal Control Salaries, Animal Control Operations, Tree Care Salaries, Tree Care Operations, Highway Salaries, Highway Operations, Snow and Ice Salaries, Snow and Ice Operations, Street Lighting Operations, Town Garage Operations, Equipment Repair and Maintenance Salaries, Equipment Repair Maintenance Operations, Sidewalk Operations, Public Works Utilities Operations, Solid Waste Disposal Salary, Solid Waste Disposal Operations, Cemetery Salaries, Cemetery Operations, Health Operations, Public Health Nurse Operations, Mental Health Nurse Operations, Council on Aging Personnel, Council on Aging Operations, Veterans Salaries, Veterans Operations, Outreach Salaries, Outreach Operations, Library Salaries, Library Operations, Park and Recreation Salaries, Park and Recreation Operations, Historical Commission Operations, Grave Markers, Flags Operations, Memorial Day, Veterans Day Operations, Arts Cultural Council, Stabilization, the Reserve Fund. Town Debt Principal, Town Debt Interest?
Hold.
On the principal? Interest, just the interest. Okay, so we have a hold on 01751-2. Regional Vocational School Operations, School Personnel, School Administration Operations, Water Salaries, Water Operations, Water Reserve Fund, Sewer Salaries, Sewer Operations, Sewer Reserve Fund. So, that is where we spend our money. And we had two holds. We had holds back on page 37 at 01192-2. And we have a second hold on page 42 at 01751-2. So, we're going to vote the rest of the budget items. They require two-thirds for passage. Are there any questions and comments on any of the other budget items that were not held? If there aren't any questions or comments, we're going to put it to a vote. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Okay, I'm going to deem they passed by the required two-thirds. We're now going to have to go back and focus on page 37 to 01192, which is the Town Hall Public Buildings Property and Maintenance Operations. Mr. Sullivan?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, I request that the Town Hall Public Buildings Property Maintenance Operations account be increased from $89,703 to $239,703 and that the total budget for that department be increased to $297,717. The reason for the $150,000 increase is as a result of the earlier decision to go forward with the town garage solar installation on the roof of the town garage. The money will be taken from free cash, so it will not affect the tax rate this year.
Okay, so there's an amendment to that line in which the expenditure would be increased to $239,703. And we'll put that to a vote. Requires two-thirds. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Okay. Approve that article. Moving to item number 01751-2, Town Debt and Interest. Mr. Sullivan?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, I request that the Town Debt Interest Budget be increased from $1,941,728 to a total of $1,946,228 or a total increase of $4,500. The reason for this increase is because of the earlier decision to proceed with the school field renovation. We were already carrying $53,000 in the interest budget to cover the bond issuance costs and half of a year's interest payment on $1.2 million. The $4,500 will allow for the increase in the bond authorization from $1.2 million to $1.5 million. The interest rate is estimated at 3%. And the annual cost of that increase on the $300,000 at 3% interest rate would be $9,000. If we borrow the money after July 1st, we only pay two interest payments a year, so it'd be a half a year's interest. That would be $4,500. That would bring the total principal and interest budget to $6,792,0061.
Okay, well, thank you. So, we have a proposal to raise line items 01751-2 to $1,946,228. That motion would require a two-thirds vote. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Okay, so that held item also is approved. So, we'll do the math for the final budget. We're going to come back for that vote. We'll let Michael do the math and we'll just continue along here. The next one is Article 18. Article 18 is an article to raise appropriate funds for a new ambulance for the fire department. It's found on page 50 of the, of the warrant report. Proposed by the fire department, requires a two-thirds vote. And Nick, do you have a motion?
I move that the town appropriate $285,000 for the purpose of purchasing a new ambulance for the fire department and that to meet said appropriation, $250,000 be transferred from the ambulance revolving fund, Account Number 31-042, and $70,000 be transferred from the general fund stabilization fund, Account Number 80-006, and that to accomplish said purpose, the fire chief be authorized to contract with and/or accept funds from state, federal, and private parties. Warrant committee recommends passage.
Do you have a report? No. Okay, no report. Okay, are there any questions and comments on Article 18? Requires a two-thirds vote for passage? If there are none, then we'll put it to a vote. All in favor of Article, of the motion on Article 18 to raise appropriate funds for new ambulance for the fire department, please say aye. Opposed? Okay, deemed that passes by the required two-thirds vote. Okay, turning our attention, if we could, right back to Article 16. Article 16 would now read, move that the town appropriate the sum of $58,524,653 to defray the costs, to delay the operating expenses the various town boards, committees, commissions, and departments as printed in the warrant report and/or as amended by this town meeting for the fiscal year commencing July 1st, 2016, as required by the General Laws, Chapter 1, Section 108. And that to meet said appropriation, the following sums be raised on the fiscal 2017 tax levy or transferred from accounts or funds as follows. We're adding $4,500 to the tax levy below and then the other $154,000. So, the fiscal year '17 tax levy would be $53,058,564. And the cemetery perpetual care interest account, $6,000, water enterprise fund, $1,812,685 million, sewer enterprise fund, $1,720,164 million, the pension reserve fund, $100,000, the sewer bedment stabilization fund, $400,000, the bond premium for Sawmill Brook, $1,156, the bond premium on the $4.2 million bond issued on 6/1/07 is $3,866. The bond premium on the Redgate Farm is $2,533. The school property revolving fund is $25,000. The MWPAT Title V septic loan receipts is $4,100. The MSBA bond anticipation note, internal reimbursement is $52,050. The school building assistance multi-school projects is $1.188.535 million. The overlay surplus is zero, the stabilization fund is zero, and this provides for free cash of 150. We'll do free cash at the end though, right Mike? So, that gives us our total budget of $58 million, appropriation of $58,524.653, requiring a two-thirds vote. Okay, all in favor, please say aye. All opposed? Okay, the motion carries by the required two-thirds vote. Article 33. Article 33 is an article to appropriate funds for downtown improvements, page 58 of the warrant report, offered by the Board of Selectmen. And warrant committee member Nick Ethanasakis has a motion.
Sure. Move that the town appropriate $15,000. Said sum to be raised on the FY '17 tax levy for the purpose of making improvements to the downtown.
And is there a report?
Yes, there is. For the purpose of downtown improvements in FY '17, the Board of Selectmen have requested the amount of $25,000. This is, this would be funded by the meals tax from the town, that the town voted a couple of years ago. For FY '17, some of the proposed improvements are year two maintenance of Strawhead Park, $5,500, planting of 30 trees in downtown district, $9,000, improvement landscaping in front of Town Hall for $500. That totals to $15,000. The warrant committee recommends appropriation of $15,000.
Okay, are there any questions on Article 33? Comments? If there are none, we will vote on the motion that the town appropriate $15,000 to be raised on the fiscal year '17 tax levy for purposes of making improvements to the downtown. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Article 42. Article 42 is an article to appropriate fund for prior year fire department collective bargaining settlement. It is found on page 63 of the warrant report, offered by the Board of Selectmen. And warrant committee member Tom Marie has a motion.
Article 42, move that the town appropriate $110,836. Said sum to be raised on the FY '17 tax levy for the purpose of funding the FY '15 and FY '16 collective bargaining contract with the Medfield Permanent Firefighters Association, Local 4478, IAFF, AFL-CIO.
Do you have a report?
Yes, we do, and a brief one at that. It has been four years since the last collective bargaining contract with the Medfield Permanent Firefighters Association. That was agree to and signed. Article 42 covers retroactive pay totaling $110,836 for FY 2015 and FY 2016. Kindly note that there was no retroactive pay for FY 2014. The pay increase breakdown by percent in year is as follows. Firefighters for 2015, 4%. For 2016, 2%. For 2017... For 2017, 2%. For the lieutenants, 2015, 5%. And for 2016 and 2017, 0%. The operating budget for fiscal year 2017 was increased by roughly $57,000 to cover expenses associated with the new contract. The warrant committee recommends approval.
Questions or comments on this article, Article 42? If there are none, we'll put it to a vote. It requires just a simple majority. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed? I'll deem that the article passes. Article 17. Article 17 is our capital budgets. Article 17 is found on page 46 of the warrant report. It was offered by the Capital Budget Committee. And warrant committee member Barbara Gibbs has a motion.
Move that the town appropriate a sum of $587,762 for capital expenditures as recommended in the warrant report and/or amended by this town meeting. And to meet this appropriation, the following funds to be raised on the fiscal year tax levy and other available funds. To be raised from the tax levy is $399,540. From the library lighting account fund, $14,039. The library HVAC system, $5,104. The library carpet, $1,620. The school tennis courts, $5,460. Also available funds from the water sewer, the water enterprise funds of $102,000, the sewer enterprise fund of $60,000. And the Board of the Selectmen and/or the Treasurer Collector and/or the School Committee and/or the Public Works Department and/or the Water and Sewage Commission be further authorized to contract with and otherwise deal with any federal and state agencies for reimbursements of any capital expenditures. And the specific capital expenditures that the Capital Budget Committee recommended was a website redesign for the town and the schools for $35,000, an all-terrain vehicle for the fire department for $26,600, a CPR chest compression system for the fire department for $14,000. For the library, a slate roof repair for $41,000, repair of the main entrance portico for $20,762. For the Council on Aging, repairing the gutters at the front door entrance for $5,000. For the Conservation Committee, land acquisition and management for $5,000. For the Wheelock School, replace the corridor doors, $15,000. And for the district, security system upgrades for $30,000. For the police department, a cruiser replacement for $46,000. For the Department of Public Works, afford F-350 truck with utility body for $60,000, and afford 650 truck with a dump body for $102,000. For the highway, stainless steel sanders, 6.3 cubic yards for 24/4, 2017 Steco trash trailer for $65,000, surface subdivisions for $40,000. And for the parking rec department, resurfacing the tennis courts at Meta Comet for $58,000. So the total to be funded from the tax levy again is $399,540,000. Warrant Committee recommends passage of this article.
Any questions regarding our town's capital budget? Microphone number two.
Yeah, I'm Kenneth Manning, 11 Pueblo Road. I have a couple of questions for you. The town hall roof replacement is not being done, is that right?
Yes, that's correct, and it needs it. We did appropriate $20,000 a few years ago, and it was intended to be an annual appropriation till we collected enough funds to fund it. The Capital Budget Committee decided this year that what they want to do is go forward with this capital study to assess all the needs for the town equipment and building repairs and everything else, and then come back with a plan that schedules these out systematically. So what we're going to try to do is take the $20,000 that we set aside and see if we're going to make temporary repairs to the roof until they are able to come up with a multi-year plan for capital renovation.
Okay. At the same time, we're spending $35,000 to redesign a website. Now, roofs seem pretty important. Websites that are a little clunky maybe can wait a year. Second of all, the school website just got redesigned in the past year, if I'm not mistaken. So I kind of hear what you're saying, but I think roofs are more important than having a spiffy new website?
I would agree, and I think my assistant, who's in charge of that, who had a lot of roof damage to her house the last year, would agree. One thing to remember, the roof of the town hall is kind of fake. The original roof of the town hall, when it was a flat building, still remains under there, so there is adequate protection. It still does need repair because it's, it looks terrible, for one thing.
Yeah.
And we have shingles flying off. But as far as the, I'll let Chris, if she wants to address the web repair.
We've had multiple complaints about our website. Any of the, have that been on there in the last year or so? Have seen, it's not, it's not mobile friendly.
I don't disagree. A roof is more important than the website.
I would agree with you. I had $70,000 worth of damage on my own roof last year. I understand that. We didn't think that it was something that needed to be done this year. There's no damage, there's no water coming in. We wanted to wait and do the full capital improvement plan before we appropriated any more money for that.
And is the school website also going to be redesigned as well, since it was just redesigned?
So we got a bid to do the, the town website to redesign, and that was, I believe it was close to $30,000, and they would add on a school module for the $5,000 to make us look the same. So we'd be fully integrated with each other. So at this point, we were moving forward with both.
Okay, so it's not going to redesign the school website? It's just integrating it with the town's website?
It will be a redesign. It'll look more like the town's website so that we stay similar.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions and comments on the capital budget? Okay, if there are none, then we will put the capital budget to a vote. Simple majority. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Okay, Article 42, the motion on Article 42 passes. Article 43. Excuse me, 17. Article 43, Article 43 is the, that's, that's the last one, right? Article 43, this is an article for the, for a motion to move that the town authorize the Board of Assessors to use $720,000 from free cash in the Treasury for the reduction of the tax rate for the fiscal year 2017. Opposed? Okay, so that motion, Article, motion on Article 43, all in favor, please say aye. All opposed? Motion carries. And so just a special thanks to Greg Sullivan for two full terms on the warrant committee. To Chris Allen for, once again, volunteering his very, very significant audio expertise. The Medfield Foundation for their, for their, providing us for water and for all of the great things that they're doing for the town. Take a second to look on the way out. The Medfield Music Department, Brenna Evans, the Chambers Strings, Laurie Barney, who sang our National Anthem, all of the folks in the school, all of the custodial staff, the great people at Medfield TV who sent this broadcast out live, and you'll also be able to see it in recorded form. Thank you to Conrad Bletzer, Chief Meaney, Chief Kingsbury, the board and branch of the government. And I would then offer thanks to you for keeping this 362-year-old tradition alive. Do I hear a motion to dissolve the Medfield's annual town meeting? Yes, I'll move, thank you. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Okay. We are dissolved.